It's a common council meeting of Tuesday, March 17th, St. Patrick's Day 2015. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski is attending by phone.
Here.
Alderman Bukavitch.
Here.
Ritz.
Here.
Tolman is excused and Alderman Gale.
Here.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in the heart.
Item three is the approval of minutes of March 3rd, 2015.
Bukavitch will make a motion to approve the minutes of 3:315 as listed.
Guzekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavitch.
Aye.
Ritz.
Upstein.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item four is a conditional use public hearing for a conditional use permit for a restaurant with drive-through facility in the property at 150 West Town Square Way in the 2nd District. City Clerk will read the public hearing notice.
Mayor, before we read the...
Sure.
I just want to make sure we have Alderman Kirkowski participating by speakerphone. I just want to make sure, Alderman Kirkowski, that you're able to hear the speakers.
Yes, I can hear. I've heard everything that's been said so far.
Okay, if at some point in the proceedings you're not able to hear anything, if there's a gap where there's nobody talking, please let us know.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Jason Hill Chick-fil-A Inc. for a conditional use permit for a restaurant with drive-through facility on the property at 150 West Town Square Way. Applicant property owner is Jason Hill Chick-fil-A Inc., property owner One West Drexel LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of the notice is February 12th, 2015.
Doug?
Thank you and good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the City of Oak Creek, and this is a public hearing on a request by Chick-fil-A for a conditional use permit to allow for a drive-through on the property to 130 West Town Square Way. Typically, well, the property itself is owned as part of the Drexel Town Square Mixed-Use Plan Development District, which is a hybrid district that was approved by the Plan Commission and Common Council some time ago to regulate development within the Drexel Town Square project. And that zoning category establishes a list of standards, a list of permitted uses, a list of conditional uses. So it's a little bit different in the sense that many of the permitted uses, explicit uses that are permitted in a typical B4, for example, zoning district, may be considered conditional uses in this zoning district, the DTS. I mean, if that is the case with some of the drive-through components. And as you'll recall, Drexel Town Square, as it was developed as this kind of a hybrid mixed-use town center, has a mix of the more traditional suburban-type retail uses in the perimeter commercial area on the east end of the site along Town Square Way, as well as the mixed-use town center-type buildings along Main Street and as you go further west. And that was the premise of how Drexel Town Square evolved and became developed. So this is part of that perimeter commercial sub-district, and as such, drive-throughs for restaurants are allowable, but they do require a conditional use permit from the city and hence a public hearing in front of the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission did review this request at their meeting of February 10th, and they did express some concerns regarding the appropriateness of this proposed use for this location, given what they mentioned as traffic impact and site design. And based on these concerns, a motion to approve the conditional use permit, or recommend approval of the conditional use permit, was not approved by the Plan Commission. So, that being said, the proposal did move forward at the request of the applicant to the Common Council, and they are entitled to a public hearing in front of the Common Council. Typically, a conditional use permit when it's brought forth to the Common Council adds to it a set of conditions and restrictions which have been reviewed by the, been prepared by staff, reviewed by the Plan Commission, and forwarded to the Council as a mechanism to regulate the property, the development that's being governed by the conditional use permit. Since the, there was no affirmative motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit, those conditions and restrictions were not presented to the Plan Commission for approval. So upon conferring with the city attorney, the process would be, depending on what the Council chose to do this evening, if they chose to approve the conditional use after the public hearing, the appropriate mechanism would be, they could approve that, but then they would also have to send this back to the Plan Commission for preparation and recommendations of conditions and restrictions, which would then need to come back to the Plan Commission and as part of an amended conditional use permit application. And Larry, if I'm misstating that, please let me know what...
That's accurate.
So, the proposal itself, again, we mentioned as part of this Drexel Town Square Mixed-Use Plan Development District. And one of the big, the major premises in that is what we call this first-generation development proposal. We call that the plan that was in the original document, which was approved by the Plan Commission and the Common Council, showed the architect's rendering of what was considered as this first-generation plan. Those properties, those projects, which were far enough along in progress at that point in time where we had at least a little bit of idea of what was happening. And the sense was, and it's written in the plan, that given those developments that were on the first-generation development proposal, there is some flexibility for the Plan Commission, for the city, in dealing with how these are designed, because really the PUD itself was crafted using this first-generation development proposal as the general development plan. So, if I may for a second, just to give your bearings, and sorry Alderman Kirkowski, you have to kind of imagine this, the top being Drexel Avenue in the north, Howell Avenue on the east, here's Town Square Way, is running through the site. So we talked about the different kind of sections of the Drexel Town Square, there being the perimeter commercial sub-district in this area. Obviously, you've got the large-format retailer Meyer Store here. Here is the mixed-use town center along Main Street, the residential component, City Hall Library. And if you look at City Hall Library, it does, it just, you can see that it's in a slightly different configuration, and that shows you how, even with the general development plan, how that evolves over time, evolves over the, as the actual development in Drexel Town Square progresses. Also shows a potential medical office building in the northwest corner, as well as hospitality site adjacent to the Town Square. So, again, the request is for a drive-through, for a conditional use permit for a drive-through. So if you look at the site, at the corner of Howell Avenue, Drexel Avenue, the corner is where Water Street Brewery is being constructed at this moment. As you move west of that, it shows a building, I think its label is F2 on this plan, which does show a drive-through as part of the first-generation development proposal, albeit it's not in the same configuration, the exact same configuration as Chick-fil-A is proposing, but clearly the first-generation development proposal did envision a drive-through use at that site. So that's an important component to that. And as we move forward in the Plan Commission, I'm sorry, the public hearing, I'm sure we'll discuss some more of the unique issues with respect to this location, Drexel Town Square, which have led to the proposal of a quick-service drive-through restaurant in this location. And we'll talk about some of the restrictions that are in place, given the location of Water Street Brewery, which is obviously a very good thing for the city, but we'll talk about how some of the real estate agreements shape what can and cannot be done on the lots adjacent to that. So I guess with that as an introduction, I'd like to, again, let everyone know that this is a public hearing. And anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed conditional use permit for a drive-through for a quick-service restaurant at this location, do please approach the microphone, give your name and address, and proceed to address your questions and comments to the Common Council. This public hearing is now open, and I understand that the applicants may want to give a brief presentation as well at this point in time.
Let's get the public's take, and then you want to take the applicant's presentation as part of the discussion on the next item?
It's up to you, Mayor, whatever you prefer.
Let's get the public's comments first. So I'll make this, I'll make three calls. First call for public comment on item...
Number four.
Item four. Keep your comments brief, and two, the specific item that we're talking about tonight. First call.
Come on up. Name and address for the record, too.
Henry Wojcowski, 9958 South Chicago Road. I'm here tonight to suggest to the Common Council that they should approve this restaurant for certain reasons, and I have several of them listed. First of all, it's a new restaurant that Oak Creek does not have, all right, which creates good competition between all restaurants, and it will increase employment in the City of Oak Creek. Now, I have some concerns about what the Planning Commission is saying about high-end, and I have a couple of comments on that. First of all, let's discuss the Myers Building. I believe, you know, having Myers is great for competition. Does it belong in the square? I don't think so. I believe it's a eyesore because it's so big. Other than the fact that it has a row of gas pumps right out on Howell Avenue, which does that qualify as an upscale commodity for the center? I believe the southeast corner, there's a building going up, Panda Express, which also has a drive-through. I believe it's going to basically be a drive-through restaurant. I don't believe there's any seating in it.
There's some seating in there.
Oh, there's some?
Just for clarification purposes...
Just for clarification purposes, I'm sorry. That is not, although it's adjacent to, it's not part of Drexel Town Square.
Okay, okay. My mistake. And I guess my last opposition, not opposition, but point that I want to bring up tonight is the Water Street Brewery. It's a brewery, and it's going to have, you know, an eating establishment. Is that high-end, having a brewery there? You know, if another brewery came in, in the area, would you allow that? I don't know. Do you take into consideration, they're going to be brewing beer at that facility, and has anyone questioned the smell that the fermentation of the beers can offset, and is that good for the community, especially in that area?
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, but we're kind of veering off the specific Chick-fil-A discussion.
Well, I'm just here that, I'm asking the Common Council to approve the...
Appreciate that, and I appreciate the other comments as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for being here.
Mark Verhalen, 1200 East Ryan Road. Being that we're only here to discuss the conditional use for the drive-through, I have a question for possibly Mr. Haskins or maybe the Mayor. I was wondering, or even Doug, being that this is a conditional use, has the city considered any restrictions moving forward as to how many other establishments are going to be allowed to request or get drive-through facilities on the property, or is this hopefully going to be the last one? Because I, you know, I'm looking at marketability when you put a drive-through restaurant on the corner here, even though there's caveat with Water Street Brewery, how does it affect the marketability of the adjacent properties right to the west?
Hello?
I don't, I don't know how they're configuring their drive-through, but if...
One second, Mark. We've got Alderman Kirkowski.
Oh, I hear you now. Thank you.
All right.
Go ahead. Can you hear the speaker?
Uh, the, up until the point where the future conditions on, on other establishments.
Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. Well, that was my first question. Is there going to be any restrictions put forward by the city, you know, possibly restricting any more drive-through restaurants being constructed in that, in the near proximity to this one?
Doug, I guess there's, there's two answers to that question. I'll give you the, from the city's perspective, the official perspective, is that drive-through facilities in the perimeter commercial district are a conditional use permit.
I understand it.
And then that gives the, any property owner the ability to petition the city to have a drive-through in that location. Now, the, the actual answer may be that the number of lots that are available and the intent of the One West Drexel, and I won't speak for them, and they are here and they can certainly speak for themselves, may not present the ability for other people to petition for drive-throughs, but certainly there is nothing that would restrict anyone from applying for another conditional use permit.
Well, that was kind of getting to my point, that this, in fact, does open the door for maybe three or four other establishments moving west on Drexel off the corner, because, you know, if you have a drive-through there, even though Water Street Brewery wants a venue like that next to them to keep some of the competition out, I guess would be the word, but, you know, does that make the properties directly to the west as marketable if that drive-through facility wouldn't be there? So I mean, does it open the door for, you know, the possibility of maybe something along the line of, you know, Olive Garden or something like that, saying, "Well, you know, we'd like to be here, but we really want to be next to Chick-fil-A," and then all of a sudden, going to Doug's comment that, "Well, right now, we don't, you know, see any problem with it, but if it, in fact, reduces the marketability of the properties and all that Drexel Town Square can get in there as another drive-through, you might end up with two or three more of them along the same area there." That's, that's kind of the first point, but the second thing, I guess, is, goes to the marketability as well, you know, and it depends on how the drive-through is configured, but the way they proposed it, that Plan Commission was to have the traffic come between Water Street and their proposed property, move around the front of the building, which no other drive-throughs in Oak Creek, you can go to all the McDonald's, all the Wendy's, all of the Burger Kings and all of them, they filter their tractor, the traffic around the back of their facility, you pick up your food on the side of the building and exit coming out. This particular venue is putting all the traffic right directly in front of the building, you order, and then you exit out the side, so it's, it's kind of putting a, you know, all the cars are going to be there as long as the drive-through is open during business hours. And as well, the traffic is coming from the east, or from the west heading east, is going to be looking at all the headlights from the cars that are in the drive-through during night hours, so. I mean, there's, there's a lot of questions here, I think, that have to be answered, and the two things I have is marketability of the properties directly to the west, and, you know, if there's going to be, if this will open the door to other properties, essentially creating a fast-food corridor here instead of what, you know, was originally envisioned for the property.
Thanks for your comments. Third call, third and final call.
Name is Jerry Frankie, West Park. We're the development partner with the city on this, 301 West Wisconsin Avenue, Milwaukee, 53203. I do feel it's important to respond to Mr. Verhalen's question about the marketability. In fact, the attraction of a quality restaurant facility such as Chick-fil-A enhances the value of the property. It does not, nothing to degrade it. It's creating more traffic. When we specifically spoke with Water Street Brewery about the desirability of having the Chick-fil-A next to them, they were very supportive of that. The other, we feel that we're going to create a nucleus of eating establishments with a wide variety of activities and dining choices. The, the second thing is that the TIA approved one quick-service restaurant of this nature in this development, and that's what we're here requesting approval for tonight.
Okay. And I would just say, overall, I know Mr. Verhalen spoke to it, Jerry spoke to it, the idea here is that we're going to have a mix of a lot of different things, and I'm under no illusion, one is elected official, two is somebody that just lives in the city, that everything we do is going to be popular, it's just not the reality. There's going to be people that are going to pick and choose what they like at Drexel Town Square, the restaurants they want to go to, whether they're ever going to go to the Freiter Building, whether they utilize that a lot. There's, you can look at Freiter as I would consider a very nice get for that overall development, just like I think Chick-fil-A is. It's outstanding company. I can, I could read emails and texts that I've received over the last month on this subject. People want this restaurant in Oak Creek. They're, they're excited about this restaurant, and as somebody that pays attention to what people say, there's a, quite a buzz for the restaurants of Drexel Town Square. I think Chick-fil-A is a perfect addition to what is going to end up being a, quite a wide mix of different offerings, and Water Street Brewery is one of those, so I think it perfectly, it fits perfectly. I'm going to make one last call for any comments, and then I'll shut down the public hearing and we'll move to item five. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. At this time, we're going to move to the discussion of this, of the ordinance, number 2759. It's to approve a conditional use permit for the property at 130 West Town Square Way for a restaurant with drive-through facility. To refer the matter to the Plan Commission to prepare and approve conditions and restrictions, and to direct that this matter be referred back to the Common Council for its meeting of Monday, April 6th, 2015, for a revision to ordinance number 2759 to incorporate the conditions and restrictions. This item is in the 2nd District. At this time, we'll open it up to the Council for comments or questions. And we have Alderman Kirkowski on the phone. Did you just have a comment? Are you reading something? What are you doing?
I have comments that I've prepared that will be very brief.
Okay, go ahead.
Notwithstanding everything that has been said, we're still looking at trying to bring in unique businesses to that area. Meyer will draw people, Water Street Brewery is going to draw people, Chick-fil-A will draw people, and they're all unique businesses in their own right. People will come to the area to check out any one of these new places, and they'll just go, just might go to any of the nearby places, so there's going to be a draw to Drexel Town Square. Now, I just want to briefly touch on the type of outstanding community member that Chick-fil-A in Greendale has been, that I know personally. The week before they opened, they brought over to Martin Luther High School 515 chicken sandwiches and fed the entire student and staff for free. They've donated chicken sandwiches to the concessions program for football games, they've done it for recent basketball games, they've made, advertised that job opportunities at Martin Luther High School, and I assume Greendale High School, and they employ a number of students from Martin Luther High School, and they're a great corporate neighbor. So I have no reason to doubt that they will be the same great corporate neighbor and community supporter in Oak Creek. I mean, I would expect them to be going over to the high school and advertising job opportunities, and I'm certain that the high school concessions and youth football and Little League will also benefit from, from, from the great company that they are. They are the right fit for Oak Creek. They are a unique type of business we want there, and I just want to say that I support the project.
All right, thanks for your comments, Alderman, and we'll keep you on the line for the rest of the discussion and the vote. I'll open it up to the rest of the Council for comments and questions. Alderman Gale?
I just wanted to voice my overwhelming support for the project, given the fact that, you know, as Doug has laid out pretty clearly, it is an improved use for the site. The company itself wants to be here, has obviously stepped up and spoken for a piece of our, our development. I've received overwhelming community support in terms of their, their presence in the city, and Alderman Kirkowski has testified and spoke to the fact that they're a great corporate citizen, so we're looking forward to their presence here. And from a, from a sighting and a site standpoint, I'll trust that our engineering and developmental office will coordinate with the company to make sure that the building itself is appropriate and then, and the, and the traffic movement around, around the site is appropriate for what we'll need to make it a successful operation, and I'm really, I'm very much looking forward to their presence on the property.
Alderman Ritz?
Pretty much echo the same comments as Alderman Gale. My, my sole concern really is the traffic conditions around it, and I take it that's what the Planning Commission's going to go back and nail down for us when we send this on to them. But as a corporate neighbor, I think they're going to be a great addition to the city.
Alderman Bukavitch?
I do sit on planning, and I'll just kind of give you a little history of that particular meeting, because it was a split vote and the Planning Commission did fail it. Really, there's no question, they were, they're a good addition to the city, they're a good business, great corporate citizen, all that stuff. They're financially sound, they bring people to the site. It was the drive-through, plain and simple, the drive-through was the issue. They thought that, I guess, if you want to call it not upscale enough, it was the drive-through aspect of it. It was actually, we met with the owners, there's no way to position that building on that particular site to not have cars wrap around and go, go on, be on Drexel Avenue. As far as going, Mr. Verhalen talked about the cars coming directly in front of the building. It is true, I guess you'd consider that the front of the building, but I believe the entrance doors are actually to the east, the main entrance doors, similar to the McDonald's here. You actually exit, you drive around the front of the building, although you enter on the south side of the building at McDonald's, so I'm not too concerned about that. As far as queuing up, I think there's plenty of room. One of the other Plan Commissioners said, "Well, will Water Street want to look at all those cars?" They have like a 200-space parking lot, so, again, the people are going to be inside. I don't know what kind of outside dining they'll have that way. Again, they're all entitled to their opinion. I looked at this two ways. At first, I was sort of like, "Well, it doesn't fit the use." I was mistaken. I said that at the meeting. It fits the use, and then I had a look at, if this doesn't go here, we have agreements in place that restrict. What can go there? So another sit-down restaurant was not allowed there, so we're down to another small retail establishment building, maybe housing multiple stores such as a phone store, GameStop, things of that nature, dental clinic. Don't know. You don't know what you're going to drag. Future marketability, I'll go with the experts on that. I agree with the Mayor, it'll be a good mix of things. Getting back to the drive-through, one thing we asked for was the landscaping, and I think we should really touch on that, because we asked them, the headlights were a concern, especially from somebody that's familiar with traffic within the city, and Doug just brought it up. If you look at the way they're doing that, they're really trying to eliminate the headlights from oncoming traffic, which would be a safety concern. I mean, we can ask the forester, I see she walked in, how tall that would get, and if it would be a good blockage of it. Keep in mind, that site is also probably about five feet higher than the road, so keep that in mind also. Wouldn't be directly within, within sight of the windshield, so. I guess my last comment is, over the last month, every resident I've come across, whether it's at the St. Patrick's Day event, or they called me for something, or just on a walk, I've asked them what they thought. Overwhelmingly, they're, they're advising me to please vote with it and put it in, and they're, they're looking forward to this food. This food must be out of this world. Everybody loves this food. Never had it myself, so.
You didn't either.
Again, I just kind of wanted to explain what I experienced that night at planning. Again, the Commissioners all had very valid reasons for their arguments and opinions. I know we, we expected, we wanted everything top-end and made of gold at Drexel Town Square. A lot of what goes into this is our spending habits in Oak Creek and our earning power in Oak Creek, and that's the demographics that help determine who comes here. People say we have too many banks coming in these days. That's a good sign. It means we're healthy financially, they want to come here. If there was no, no money within the general public, they wouldn't be here, but as far as the high-end stores go, you need a certain amount of demographics to support those, and right now, Oak Creek just isn't quite there, so we may not see those top-end stores like Nordstrom's and things that Toast is pulling in, because they just have a higher per cap medium income than we do, so. Nothing to be ashamed of. I think our development's looking great, we're financially sound, and it'll be a great addition to the city, so with that, I'll shut up.
Alderman Guzekowski?
I too sit on Plan Commission, and Alderman Bukwitz kind of stole my thunder here, but some of the things I'll touch on real quick are the visions. I think one of the things that, there's a perception that there's this old, original vision of what it should look like, they're high-end, this, that, and the next thing. We can't, we can't get in, in the game of playing to market. You know, there's a plan for Drexel Town Square, and after I took time to read and understand the, the master plan, it, it does fit the master plan. So I too have gotten numerous emails and phone calls and texts supporting this, so I see it as a win-win for, for the city and, and for Chick-fil-A and Drexel Town Square, so.
My apologies, we have the applicants here. Did you want to add any comments, or...
Sure. My name is Jason Hill. I'm with Chick-fil-A out of Atlanta, Georgia. I just want to thank you all for your positive support of us and all the comments that you've made tonight. We have close to 1,900 stores, and we're part of those communities all over the country. And as you know, last year, we kind of made our big splash back into the Milwaukee area as we were malls for many, many years, and... as we were malls for many, many years, and those malls had since closed, and then we came in with several freestanding units, and so we were very, very excited about the opportunity to make Oak Creek one of the next ones in our rollout of stores in, in Wisconsin. And we're specifically proud to be part of this Drexel Town Square development, it's a high-end development, we understand that. We do consider ourselves a high-end tenant. I'll, I'll bet you there aren't very many tenants, fast food, drive-through, or otherwise, that come in right out of the gates with a four-sided brick building. And that's just part of our, our prototypical plans that we do across the country. That just speaks volumes to how we want to appear to our customers and, and within our communities. And that doesn't just limit itself to the building, we also do that across our site. So you're not gonna find a cleaner dumpster area, you're not gonna find a cleaner site where trash isn't collecting in all the landscape areas, you're not gonna find the lawn knot mode, the landscaping kept up with very high-quality maintenance. And so our operators take a lot of pride in their sites because of our unique franchise model. You know, going into it, our operators understand that they're allowed to own and operate one restaurant business, and so that's their baby, that's their bread and butter, so it behooves them to keep it looking clean, to keep the customer relations at the highest peak it could possibly be. And so that's the type of person that you're gonna have here at this store if we should gain approval to open it. So I just wanna thank everybody here, especially those that were on the Plan Commission. We did get a little wind taken out of our sails the last time, and we're hopeful that we can gain a positive vote tonight, and we look forward to hopefully one day being a part of the community. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any other questions? Doug?
Just a follow-up, and I think Jason, you're being a little bit modest, because the plans, Chick-fil-A has been, has worked with the city very well in addressing some of the aesthetic concerns, and not only have they added brick on all four sides, but they've, they've met with their glazing, and they've actually added some stone elements, so this is going to look, dare I say, better than the ones that you have in Brookfield and Greendale right now. So I, I'm pleased with the cooperation that we've received thus far, I have, I have no reason to believe that it won't be extended once we go into the plan review process.
You know, somebody that works in PR as well as being mayor, you don't just bring a quality product and the, and the representation of a great company, you also create buzz. And what we're about at Drexel Town Square is creating buzz, and that's what we've been working hard on for the last three years, right? We want people to understand that this is something different in, in, in the South Shore, South suburban areas. We're working every day to make that the reality, so we talk about it, we, we, I'll go on TV or radio, we'll, we'll talk to the Business Journal, the Biz Times, we'll tell the story, and it, trust me, because we, like, they always, they forward me all the trade papers, this is one of the hottest projects around, and it's one of the most unique projects around. So you help us create that buzz, and that's the value, additional value of a company like Chick-fil-A being part of Drexel Town Square.
Appreciate that.
Yep. Alderman Bukowicz?
If you could just, a little off-topic, but a lot of people are asking me about your hours of operation and days you're open, if you could just touch on that?
Sure, so we are open 6:30 to 10:00, Monday through Saturday, closed on Sunday.
Yeah, they were asking me how late you were open, if you were late-night like a competitor, so.
Nope. Latest we would possibly be open is 10:30.
Okay, thank you.
For a unit like this, so. The operator does get to choose generally his hours of operation, but his or her hours of operation.
And I, I don't know if I've seen this or read this somewhere, you, your point of view is you give your employees off on Sunday?
Yes, sir.
They work hard during the week, they get their Sundays off.
That's right.
Which is not a bad thing. Any other questions?
Just comments, Steve.
Sure.
On behalf of the council, just wanna thank management for making an effort to be here at tonight's meeting, and to answer Mark's concerns a little bit about maybe the potential other sighting on the property, obviously with the one with Drexel Board, general oversight responsibility, and the fact that uses such as this would have to come back through council. Again, there are multiple layers of actually oversight and approval necessary for any other types of sighting, like, issues like this. So I think there is a decent level of checks and balances that are gonna make sure that we're gonna get the kinda product we want on the property.
All right. Nothing else, motion on five.
Bukowicz will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2759 to approve a conditional use permit for the property at 130 West Town Square Way for a restaurant with a drive-through facility. To refer the matter to the Plan Commission to prepare and approve conditions and restrictions, and to direct that this matter be referred back to the Common Council for its meeting on Monday, April 6, 2015, for a revision to ordinance number 2759 to incorporate the conditions and restrictions.
Ritz will second. Roll call.
Mayor, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to add, after the, in your motion, I think it'd be appropriate to, to say to prepare and approve conditions and restrictions that are consistent with similar uses in the city?
So moved as Larry said?
Second agrees.
Second?
Yeah, agrees. Ritz was the second. Anything else?
No, I think that'll cover it.
All right, roll call.
Alderman Ritz?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukowicz?
Aye.
All right. See you next, next Plan Commission meeting.
Sounds great.
All right, thank you, thank you, guys. All right, moving on to new business. We're gonna cut you through, Steve.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen, goodnight.
Thanks for joining by phone and giving us your thoughts.
Okay.
All right, new business, item six is a consideration of resolution number 11601-031715, approving the city administrator employment agreement. Who's taking this?
I, I can.
All right. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, a, a review of the city administrator's performance was conducted in a closed session on the 17th of February, and the consensus was unanimous, and that was to continue the agreement with Jerry Peterson as the city administrator, to increase his pay as of January 1 of this year from $118,000 per annum to $120,000 per annum, and to add an additional three days of PTO or paid time off. And this revised agreement reflects those terms and keeps this agreement for an indefinite term. That, that remains in, in full force and effect. So recommendation would be to adopt resolution 11601.
Just quickly backtracking, Alderman Bukowicz had pressed his button, I had not noticed it, was there anything you wanted to add to the record?
I just, I guess I just wanna put it on record that Alderman Kerkowski called in, and, and I, I understand that's legal and all, I really wish he would do it for the whole meeting and not à la carte the items they want to weigh in on. I just, I, I think that's a bad precedent, and I, I don't think it's a good practice, that's my personal opinion.
So noted.
Just so noted.
All right, moving back to six. You made your comments, questions, or comments from the council? No comments?
Oh, sorry, Steve, sorry.
Go ahead.
Jerry, I just wanna reiterate consensus generally among the unanimous across the council, Yoman's work, fantastic job, we appreciate the, obviously significant effort, you know, I, I look in your office and at, at some of the planning things that you're doing there, and I realize that there's no possible way I could even begin to function under some of the things that we were, were asking you to do, so we are highly appreciative of your efforts, congratulate you on a, on a job well done, and I think a well-deserved package of salary and benefits.
Anyone else? Motion on six.
Gale, move to approve resolution 11601-031715, approving the city administrator employment agreement.
Guzekowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukowicz?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
All right, item seven is a motion to authorize city approval of professional services agreement with Environ in an amount not to exceed $247,500 for North Lake Vista Bluff stabilization, including preparation of an Irap, bid preparation, construction oversight and documentation, and grant coordination. Jerry?
Last, late last year, staff provided an overall presentation of accounts on Lake Vista, a part of that was the south end of the property, we have Lake Vista Park, we also had the north bluff area, we've been advancing very nicely on the, on the park area, and we've been working through issues with the DNR on the north bluff area. This contract does provide for professional services with Environ, who's really been with us since the beginning on this, working through the environmental issues on this, and also the design issues. We have gotten what we think is Irap approval from the Department of Tr, Department of Natural Resources, which is needed to move forward on this project, and we have worked very hard to get that, a number of the staff members. So this is the contract to complete that work, also to do the design on the construction. We've got a map here that shows you the extension of a bike path and basically the stabilization of the bluff top, as well as putting a cover on the area that we're working in, and you'll also see an eight-foot fence on the west side of the property that we are working on. We're moving, I can tell you, towards, rather than a Irap, a rap, and that means we've got the rest of the property, of our property, that's west of the, west of the fence that we're working with the department on, and hopefully we'll bring a solution to you later in the year on the rest of the property. But we expect this work to be done this year, and good access to the lakefront top, good protection from the pollutants, and this is a, a lot of work required to get through the regulatory oversight on this north bluff area.
All right, questions or comments?
I would, I would point out, the city has gotten two grants, though, as part of this project as well. We got a $375,000 ready-for-reuse grant, and we also got a, a bike path grant that helps spend our, our dollars on the site.
And we'll be talking about the grants received on this and other projects in the first newsletter that'll be out sometime this summer, so all the residents will be able to see what, what's happening out there. Yes, Mr. Degner?
Arden Degner, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. I know there's been a lot of talk about how to keep that bluff from eroding, and apparently this must be a solution, although you mentioned that there was additional work to be done. Now, I, I do know that, that the Lakeshore Towers in Cudahy, when they had that bluff eroding, that they inserted a number of, of pipes, I don't know how far it went into the bluff to prevent further erosion, and I am not clear exactly how that is gonna be handled. From what I understand, that I didn't think that this property was as contaminated as, as the Dupont property in this north area. There apparently must been a storm sewer somewhere to drain the houses, the Cooper residences and Fifth Avenue through that property. Has that been, has that been considered?
Go ahead, Jerry.
Yes, the storm sewer still exists and will continue to operate, so that's not gonna be changed as part of this project. The work that's being done is to stabilize the upland or the top side of the bluff, not the toe of the bluff, that's still a project.
Oh, that's still a project.
Yeah, it's still a project that would remain to be done, but it's outside of our ability to fund at this point. We've designed the bike path and the work that we're doing far enough back the, from the edge of the bluff that we feel that, and it's the experts who've done all of the offshore erosion studies. We've also used an individual by the name of, his name is Dr. Tunser Edel, he's done all of the evaluation of the slope stability and what it needs to create it in a stable position. He's the leading expert, if not in this area in the state on this, so he has certainly advised us and agrees with the solutions that we have, but this is not the toe solution, it's the upland solution to this. And drainage is a significant issue that we look at, we did a stormwater evaluation on this site, we yet have to provide the department to get to that, I said we're in the Irap to get to that final rap, that's one of the things that we have to provide to the department, is a stormwater and grading plan for the rest of the property, so that will be out there, again, coming hopefully later this year.
That's one of the questions that arose in my mind, too, is that if this is a drainage area, normally, we have to be very careful about stormwater entering the lake, and so I would expect you might have to put a, a, some sort of a planted outfit, or planted wetland there so that this can be filtered, so you're, you're right, there's a lot of problems here yet.
You know, you obviously understand these issues, that was our original proposal a year ago to the department, and it's a proposal that they actually didn't approve in terms of the bioswells, and I won't get into all the technical reasons, but that's still an issue that's out there, is to provide for the drainage. We wanna make sure the drainage isn't going over the top of the bluff and creating erosion, so we have to find good ways to do that, and, and we feel we can, but I think you're, you're right on with some of your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. And from the public perspective, all the things that we're doing out there are improvements over the status quo, which has allowed no access for 85 years or whatever it is. So we're using the best techniques that are available to us, and, and in many cases, using grant money to do it. Any other questions on this? Motion?
Gale, move to authorize city approval of a professional services agreement with Environ in an amount to not exceed $247,500 for North Lake Vista Bluff stabilization, including preparation of an Irap, bid preparation, construction oversight and documentation, and grant coordination.
Guzekowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Bukowicz?
Aye.
Bukowicz?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Vendor summary, item eight. No questions? Any questions? Just for the public, amount is $652,263.17. Alderman Bukowicz?
Just two, and one, I guess Doug can take care of, Mike probably the other. Items eight and nine, the $18,500 going to the city of Franklin for the 27th Street project, is that just the stuff going on at Rossin Avenue and what we see up to Drexel?
That, oh.
Oh, that would be Mike.
Yeah, I, the lion's share of that $18,000 is our share of the bearing of the overhead utility lines, the electric cable, right, yes.
Okay. And then, just item nine, is that the beginning of our nuances, the first, first drawn in?
Yep.
Okay.
Alderman, I will say also that the city still is in active agreement with the city of Franklin whereby the contract that they have with HNTB is through the city of Franklin, but through an MOU, we reimburse them for half of that, so there's, we're just kinda on the tail end of some of those costs that were incurred in the third quarter, I'm sorry, the fourth quarter of last year.
Okay, so we'll see this play out over the next two years as they.
Yeah, I mean, you're just about, just about done with that, with those services.
Okay, thanks.
All right, motion?
Gale, move to approve the 2015 vendor summary report in the amount of $652,263.17.
Guzekowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Bukowicz?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Bukowicz?
Aye.
Under engineering, item nine is a consideration of resolution number 11600-031715, accepting the 2014 annual report for Oak Creek's WPDES stormwater. I assume that's Natural Resources 216?
That's correct.
Good guess. Comments?
This is the, just, just the annual report is a requirement of our, of our permit to summarize the, the work that was accomplished the, the previous year, so basically just summarizes everything. No, no real surprises, the only thing I would point out is that we increased by just slightly over 100% of the sediment that was picked up with the catch basin cleaning and the street sweeping, and we think that that's probably related to the ice and sand, or the, the snow and ice removal, where, whereby the sand was added to the salt mixture to kinda spread that further, so while there's savings in, in, in doing that, there's a little bit of a cost with having to collect that sand.
Makes sense, yes, Jerry, that's Jerry?
I know the council's noted this in terms of our stormwater program and talked about visible improvements throughout the city. One, one of the things of note in this, in this report is that our infiltration rates are. One of the things of note in this, in this report is that our infiltration rates are been reduced by 36%. The state requirements were 20%. There was a time at which we had no idea how we were going to reach 20% and we are far surpassing that. So, not only are we having, you know, a significant amount of development, we're having real quality improvements in terms of the stormwater management that we have, in terms of some of the suspended solids and things like that that we're capturing. You're going to see that a lot at DTS as well. And so, it's not just a quantitative issue, it's a qualitative issue and I think that's something of note for the department and the folks who are working on this program.
Excellent. No questions, motion on nine.
Bukavich will make a motion to adopt Resolution number 11600-031715, accepting the 2014 annual report for Oak Creek's WPDES stormwater and our 216 permit.
Ritz will second. Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Item ten is a motion to enter into a contract with RA Smith National, Inc. for Department of Natural Resources and Army Corps of Engineers wetland permitting for an estimated contract total of $25,100. Project number 15023 in the second district.
And this is related to the project to extend 20th Street at the intersection of 20th and Drexel Avenue, extending 20th Street to the north. A road that will eventually serve most of the property in that region as it develops north of Drexel Avenue and east of 27th Street. First phase of this road would really serve as the access road for the elementary school that will be under construction later this year. And consequently, recall, last meeting, there was approval for an agreement for the city and Northwestern Mutual and the school district as a cooperative effort to fund the design and construction, and design and construction of that roadway. Very tight timeframe as the school district wants to be under construction in June of this year, so.
Is that realistic?
It's going to be very, very tough. And so, the reason that we're trying to get approval for this effort to get underway just as quickly as possible, again, this is just the permitting for regulatory approval to be working in this area. There's a lot of sensitive, environmentally sensitive area, wetlands, in which this road would be constructed across. So, a fairly extensive effort to get approvals. So, we're working with RA Smith. They're very familiar with the project, they were involved with it with NML even before the city got fully engaged. We are now coordinating this effort. So, we're looking for this authorization so that they can go in just as soon as possible. What we expect to get out of this, if not at the next meeting, maybe two meetings from now, would be approval of a design contract for actual design of the road because by then, we will have direction from Army Corps and the DNR as far as what that road can be. So, this is really step one of a two-step process.
So, there is some feedback, they're going to tell us what's doable and what's not doable?
Yes. Yeah, there's been some preliminary meetings and, you know, just an expression that they know the urgency, willing to work with us, but we need to give them all the information that they're looking for.
Okay. Questions? Motion?
Bukavich will make a motion to enter into a contract with RA Smith National, Inc. for the Department of Natural Resources and the Army Corps of Engineers wetland permitting for an estimated contract total of $25,100. Project number 15023.
Ritz will second. Roll call.
Alderman Ritz?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
All right, streets, parks and forests, we have Rebecca Lanes here to tell us about it. The motion to award the 2015 tree bid to St. Aubin Nursery in the amount of $34,015. Project number 14014. Good evening Rebecca.
Good evening. We got a few bids in and they were difficult to separate. So, well, one of the objectives that we had was to get two-inch size and to fill the order. So, I have organized this table with the order filled to the greatest degree, 97%, and next to it is a caliper of tree size that shows what percentage of their bid was within the range that we wanted it. So, filling all that and looking at the cost per tree, including delivery, we are asking to go with St. Aubin.
Just for the public, since they're not reading the staff reports generally, what kind of trees are we talking about? Why do you pick those kind of trees?
Well, we always pick, these are street trees, so they have to be urban tolerant. And we're working on diversity, so we're looking for species that we don't have a lot of.
Give me some species names.
All right, here we have Buckeye, that's one that we're adding more in, River Birch. We have a fair amount of Hackberry, but we're adding more. Gingko is a genus that we're working on adding in, hard to find. Kentucky Coffey Tree, Ironwood Plain Tree, and a little varying within the genus, so within the oak family, we might use four or five different kinds. That is also a good practice.
So, if the public, if they were here 20 years ago and they saw the kind of trees we put in, maybe more than, longer than that, and they saw the trees we put in now where we're going to put in, what would be the biggest thing they would notice about the difference, if there is any?
Well, there used to be basically five trees used generally. It was Linden, Honey Locust, Maple, Maple, Maple.
Right.
And, let's see, Norway Maple especially. Elm.
Many which didn't serve the purposes that they were intended for, in some ways.
Well, in some ways, it was also cultural. There wasn't the general practice around of planting trees correctly, for instance.
Right.
So.
So, we've learned a lot in those 20-some years?
Yes, a lot.
Thanks for your help in that area. All right, questions? I don't have the only tree questions.
So, now, since this is the Badger State, is it appropriate to be putting Buckeyes in? Really?
Just a few.
No one will know their Buckeye?
I didn't.
What does a Buckeye tree look like? I have no idea.
I know what the nut looks like.
All right, other questions? It's a great program, we're not going to get away from this, we need to plant trees in the city, it's part of what we are, so we're not going to shy. There's expenditures that have to be made sometimes and this is one that's important. Alderman Bukavich?
How do you decide where these trees are going? I mean, do certain types go in certain parts of the city?
Well, right now, if we start a new block, we would vary, you know, we would have two or three different types of trees that way. If something like Emerald Ashbutter came along, we wouldn't lose the entire street at one time. That's part of the strategy. Also, it keeps insects and things from hopping directly. But, as we replace in older subdivisions, we're trying to diversify by adding the types of trees that are not already in that subdivision. So, we will be mixing it up a lot more than it used to be.
Okay, thank you.
Since they'll all be pruned similarly, it shouldn't look strange. Trees tend to grow into their site, you know?
Yeah. Anybody else?
I like the diversity ideas, solid way to go.
Nothing from you Ken, huh?
Not a.
You've got a lot of trees in your district.
Yeah.
All right. Motion on 11.
Gail will move to award the 2015 street bid to St. Aubin Nursery in the amount of $34,015. Project 14014.
Guzekowski, Gail second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Licensing Committee, license committee.
The licensing committee did not meet prior to tonight's meeting, but tentative recommendations are being made as follows. Ritz will make a motion to grant an operator's license to the following individuals, each having received a favorable background report.
Gail will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Thirteen.
Ritz will make a motion to grant a change of agent to Loves Travel Stops and Country Stores. DBA Loves Travel Stop number 4329650, South 20th Street, from Jerry Jarvis to Sean A. Lean, 170 West Rainbow Ridge Drive, Oak Creek. And a favorable background report has been received on that as well.
Gail will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Fourteen.
Ritz will make a motion to grant a 2014-2015 Class A combination license to AT Mart, Inc., DBA Oak Creek Mobile, Calac BKC Agent, 1200 West Rossin Avenue, with issuance subject to obtaining an occupancy permit. A favorable background report was received.
Gail will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Anyone know what the Pineapple Cafe is? It's the replacement, is the replacement for Prime Table? New owners?
It looks like the address.
That's what I know.
Oh, there you go.
Mark shaking his head.
Okay.
Okay, when is that open?
I don't know for sure, I don't know a definitive date.
All right. Can we get a second?
Yep.
Roll call.
Done.
All right, will you vote for that one?
Yeah, I was just, I was.
Yeah, now I'm not picking.
I was interrupting.
All right.
Sorry.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. And finally, Ritz will make a motion to grant a 2015 landfill license to Herman and Elizabeth J. Copeland, 6931, South Hall Avenue.
Mike, I have, sorry, I have a question. What's going on with this one? I thought we were letting these expire and... Didn't want to do that.
You can ask any question you want.
We, they've been renewing this landfill license since, I believe, 1986 might have been the original year that it's been, since it was originally applied for. We didn't see anything really standing in the way of allowing them to renew again. Now, we don't see anything imminent as far as any activity out there. We're kind of wondering why they would want to keep renewing. But, again, we didn't see anything in the way that would force our hand to.
What power do we have if in fact, some kind of landfilling was commenced? Do we, do they have to seek permission to start or is it, once they have this, they can do it?
We'd ask them to give us a grading plan to see what, you know, what's the extent of the filling and basically then they would have to fill to that grading plan and survey the property to certify that it was filled to what was approved.
And that would have to be approved before they could fill?
Before the fill could begin, yes.
You know, when they come in, you can certainly ask them why they're.
Yeah, I mean, we're really kind of scratching our heads as to why this keeps getting renewed, but we.
Maybe Mark has some insight.
But we didn't want to.
Yeah.
You're not going to haul any stuff there, are you?
Mark for Halen, 1200 East Round Road. I've known the Copelands for a long time and I think this goes back along quite a few years when Mr. and Mrs. Copeland were a lot younger and I do believe that they keep, I do believe that they keep wanting to renew this in the event that they want to do something with the back part of their property because I think when they had the original license, they didn't really obtain enough fill or actually finish out the operation that they wanted to do. And I think, you know, it's, they believe it's their advantage to keep renewing the license in case they decide to finish it out to the plan that they originally had or if their son Chris would want to finish it out because he's still currently living at that residence and whatnot. But, I think that's why they keep renewing it. There hasn't been any activity of Freddie for a long time, but I do believe that, you know, there's something there that has to be completed to what they wanted to originally accomplish and they haven't gotten to that point yet.
Yeah, it wasn't all that long ago. We saw proposals for streets and things going, you know, north and west off of Rossin and Howell, so.
Yeah, I also think that, you know, there was some small development and stuff on that corner as you guys know, there's a strip mall and stuff there.
All right.
You know, if they ever decide to sell the property, I think having that landfill license would probably, you know, expedite the process for somebody else that would want to move forward with that thing too, you know, whether it's under the Copeland's name or somebody else's that would happen to want to finish it out, so. That's why they keep asking for renewal.
Mike, and at the time, there was, you know, tons of wetland impact there, that's why kind of the property kind of spun out of interest. So, we would have definite ability to be in front of that.
Absolutely. We, so, I mean, that's another reason why we balked a little bit this time and talked it through a little bit more. We were thinking that, you know, if they do decide, okay, it's time to, you know, we've got a source now, we want to do some filling, we'd have to see that grading plan and it would have to, you know, address the sensitive areas. They could not just be filling in the wetlands, so they're, you know, they would have some challenges, I believe, if they wanted to do some filling. You know, as the years go by, these wetlands seem to get bigger and bigger, they don't, they never get smaller. So, there would be regulatory agencies involved.
If you keep a file for things you need to do in the future, let's just ask them what their intentions are, maybe that's the way we should start the discussion rather than just guessing about it.
Okay.
Thanks. We need a second on this.
Gail will second.
Gail seconds, roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Gail? Aye.
All right. Item 17 is a motion to convene in the closed session immediately following the conclusion of the common council meeting pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.851E to consider a proposed tax incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement by and between the City of Oak Creek and Emerald Row LLC, Drexel Town Square in the second district. Ken?
Gail moves to convene in the closed session immediately following the conclusion of the common council meeting pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E to consider a proposed tax incremental District Number 11 Finance Development Agreement by and between the City of Oak Creek and Emerald Row LLC.
Guzekowski, Gail second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bukavich?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.